Cosmique, daughter. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Backus. Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. De... Mrs. Dean. Uh, Mr. DeFrancesco?
Here.
Mr. Giraud?
Here.
Mr. Geisweit? Mr. Gulick?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Alright, um, item two is recommend approval of the following meeting minutes from September nine and September twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Going to start this evening off with a presentation with Mr. Newfer.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Cambridge Springs. We have a long rite of passage for eighth graders here, and we've got some here to talk a little bit about it, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Thompson first.
This is a cross-curricular presentation, so we have our papers passed also, and Ainsley and Hope are going to give you some packets because we have so much to say that we can't fit it into five minutes, and we thought you might like to see, um, what we do.
Thank you.
We sat down today, and we figured out, just from all, we have been taking our eighth grade students on a historic walking tour of our little town's favorite streets. And we figured out it's been thirteen years. Neither of us thought it was that long. And neither of us, being natives of Crawford County or of this little town, um, I don't know, I guess ever thought we would have this amazing opportunity to teach a live event history piece and share that with our students. And our, our eighth grade team is a wonderful team. We get those kids ready for eighth, for high school, um, and the team has taken off all kinds of wonderful collaborative activities. Only one of our team members is local graduate, right? Megan Strack, the rest of us are transplants, but everybody has embraced Cambridge history. Oh, yeah, the two of them. And they've embraced the idea that local history is a wonderful vehicle to make connections with kids. And our goal with this whole program is for kids to understand that there are, everything we do in all of their classes is connected. You know, English class connects to history class, and math class connects to science class, and they all connect to art class. And so we make those connections, and then the big leap is that it all connects to their lives and the community. So it's a great day out walking about, um, town and preceded by activities and followed by activities. It's one of the favorite things that we do. We could literally talk to you for hours, and we've kind of taken it on as our own personal favorite outing of the year. We log about five miles that day. The kids do five miles of walking that day. We are out all day long from the beginning of the school day until the end of the school day, and we have various stops, and every year there's something new that we learn. This year, we incorporated the water treatment plant, which we have never done. So we took the kids to the water treatment plant here in town. We climbed the ladders. We looked into the tubs with the dirty water. We talked to Mr. Dunn about how they clean our water, where they get our water, what it costs, and how long it takes. It was absolutely amazing. But now maybe the girls can talk to you just a little bit about what they noticed or what they learned. This is Hope Brown. She lives right here in town. Go ahead, Hope.
I like the walking field trip, and we got to like go look at a bunch of hotels. I walked by this one named the Bartlett every single day, and then we looked at slide shows. I never realized that that was the Bartlett, and I thought it was really cool to look at pictures of how it progressed and changed over the years.
So things they see every day, they see with new eyes on the walking field trip. This is Ainsley, evening. She lives here in town as well.
So when we were actually going on the field trip, they had us fill out these packets full of information from all the places we went, and we had to fill out a round of answer questions. So that was a really cool part, I thought, that we have something that we can take after the field trip, so that we, if we're ever curious about something that we learned, we can go through and-
And the map, hold up your map, please. The one, one cool thing. One thing that's great about Cambridge Springs, and the kids whine that we don't have Walmart, we don't have McDonald's, whatever, but what we have is, is streets and buildings that we can trace back to, this is an 1895 map. And we, we looked at these streets from 1895, and then we went out and walked on those same streets, um, in September. So it, you know, Cambridge Springs has resources that they probably never appreciated. Many of our kids didn't know we had a museum. Yeah. So we take them to the Historical Society and the museum. It's a good day, and we're hoping for many, many more years of our, of our walking tour. Yeah, you know we had a water treatment plant, very good. Any questions?
No, but I would like to go next year. So you guys sent me the, I didn't know you did it either, so it's my ignorance.
We've had, we've had some people from the public ask, the O N three teachers always say, hey, when are you doing this? We'd like to know. We tried to do it once, and I don't think we advertised well enough, so.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We have a fill-in for the student delegate representative at Sagertown Junior Senior High School, Ms. Hetrick.
Good evening. My name is Nick Garchalki. I'm the managing editor of the Panther Press, and I'd like to bring you up to speed on what has been happening. Tuesday, seniors participated in mock interviews as part of their career exploration. Business people interviewed the seniors in the library. This is facilitated by the Crawford County K-12 Career Alliance and senior English teacher Bill Hetrick. The business people were impressed with the resumes the seniors had prepared in class and the way they presented themselves in the interviews. Last week was homecoming at Sagertown. Carly Price and Alex Peckner were crowned homecoming king and queen. The theme for this year's dance was Roaring Twenties. The PSA team will be given to all sophomores and juniors at Sagertown on October sixteenth. This is to help students prepare for college and career. The girls' cross-country team clinched Region Three title Tuesday by defeating Rocky Grove and Ponteau area to finish the season eight in 'oh. This is the first girls' region title since 2009. The Sagertown golf team clinched their record eighth consecutive Region Three title a couple weeks ago. Sophomore Dylan Flinchbaugh has advanced to the Western Regional Individual Championship to be held next week. The girls' volleyball team, as well as both boys and girls' soccer teams, are getting ready for the district playoffs. Faculty and staff had a training on the block schedule on Wednesday, October ninth, from a member of IU five staff. Recruiters for the military have recently made several visits to the school. Currently, we have three students who have enlisted in the military, Ray Snyder, Air Force, Zane Slasher, Marines, and Caitlin Kazala, Navy. On Wednesday, students attended Manufacturing Day at the Bayfront Convention Center. Senior Aaron Brown was featured in the coverage of the event on YourErie.com. Next Friday, the Panther Press staff will compete at Penn State Baron to qualify journalists to go to Pennsylvania School Press Association state finals in March. Thank you for your time, and please follow us on Twitter and Instagram at PantherPressSH. I would like to note that Nick did actually come to my room today and practice this for you, and he had a family emergency come up. You've also received email copy, and the link on there to YourErie is clickable, so thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to Athletic Committee. Mr. Gulick, Chairman. Five A. Recommend approval to accept the resignations of the following coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of the winner coaches as listed and attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the athletic travel, Sagertown High School baseball to Myrtle Beach, Sagertown High School softball to Cocoa Beach.
On behalf of the committee, once again, I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye.
He said aye.
I don't think he was, Bob.
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, I got six. Education Committee. Mr. Brooks, Chairman. Item A, recommend approval for Sherry Jardina and Angie Mumford to attend the Education Excellence Fair in Hertz, PA, October fifteen and sixteen, representing Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School, Cambridge Carriage Project.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this is a great opportunity for the kids to go down there and to showcase something great, another great thing that's happened here at Cambridge.
Anybody else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of an affiliation agreement between Pencrest School District and Slippery Rock University School Nursing Program as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval to accept the Northwestern PA Chapter of the National Tooling and Machining Association Education Foundation Grant Awards to Sagertown High School and Cambridge Springs High School for $4,000 each.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you to the NTMA Education Foundation for the $8,000 and for Mr. Nahay, Mr. Williams to reach out to them for those programs. That money is used to purchase equipment for our students. Item D, comprehensive plan. This is an information-only item. In accordance with the rise chapter four planning requirements, the Pencrest Comprehensive Plan document will be on public display and be made available for public inspection and comment for 28 days on the district website and located at the district office in Sagertown. The comprehensive plan will place before the board for approval on November 14, 2019.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
No motions, no motion. Oh, then. There's just information only.
Excellent. Alright, Transportation and Facilities Committee. Mr. Johnson, Chairman. Item A, recommend approval of a parent-provided transportation agreement for student A.
On behalf of that, uh, committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Finance Committee. Item eight, Mr. Brown, Chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the treasurer's report as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of the disbursements as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
C, recommend approval of the high school activity clubs for the 1920 school year as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, recommend approval to contract with Burke One to print and mail the 2019 Act One Homestead/Farmstead applications as attached.
On behalf of the committee, make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, recommend approval of five-year lease agreement with Haggen Business Machines and Great American Financial Services as attached. Please note, this is new equipment at a less cost for five years.
On behalf of the committee, I make the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item F is for information only. We received our Act One index this year. Long story short, is the, uh, most we could raise taxes would be 1.9 mils for $530,000. One mil generates approximately $280,000. Uh, item nine is Personnel Committee. Mrs. Dean, Chairperson. I'd like to run this as a consent agenda, items A through H.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item 10, Policy Committee. Mr. DeFrancesco, Chairman. We have the first reading of five policies. There is nothing to vote on. Please review Policy 208, 217, 1, 805, 807, and 814. Item 11, Safety and Security Committee. Mr. Backus, Chairman. Recommend approval of the updated All Hazards and Emergency Operations Plan and corresponding functional annexes. The Emergency Operations Plan is a public document and will appear on the district website. The corresponding functional annexes are not public documents.
On behalf of, uh, committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Crawford County Career and Technology Center. Mr. Johnson, Representative. There's no report this evening. Intermediate Unit Number Five, Mr. Brooks, Representatives. Mr. Brooks, you have a report this evening?
Um, IU five is doing IU five stuff. There's a, a series of videos they're putting out from a gentleman that, um, his name escapes me, but it, he's a businessman that, um, is involved in public schools and that we'll be sharing that with the board.
Thank you. PSBA Legislative Report. Mr. Gulick, Representative. There is no report this evening. Item 15 is new business.
I have, Mr. President, I have, I'd like to introduce two motions. I'd like to read the first one. I'm making a motion for reimbursement of all legal fees incurred by me, Board Director Luigi DeFrancesco, in the performance of my position as an elected school board director relative to school business responsibility and adjudication by court order as to my duties, responsibilities, accountability, and obligations. In accordance to my oath of office and that of all school board directors as dictated by the Public School Code, in adherence to the proper review and approval of taxpayer money. These duties, responsibilities, accountability, and obligations were denied to me on May 12th, 2016, by the school board directors and confirmed by the Crawford County Court of Common Pleas on August 31st, 2017. Hence, the cause of my expenses for school business and the legal fees to be reimbursed to me have been submuted to the board previously at the September board meeting.
Oh, second. It's a second.
Uh, any discussion?
Yes. This is usually the, the procedure according to the Rural Roberts. Uh, Mr. President, board directors, taxpayers, you're probably wondering why of all the time I will place a motion to reimburse me for my expenses incurred in a process to confirm my duties and responsibilities to the taxpayers of Pencrest so close to the election. I didn't even think about it until it was broadcasted on social media. Unfortunately, lots of bad information is being broadcasted on the social media touching on information that actually was discussed during the board's executive session. Unfortunately, I had no choice but to let you know that what happened and what's going on. At this time, I'd like to read to you, directors, and to the general public, what, how to read the motion that started it all. Okay, this is a motion that was placed on the board, to the board on May 12th, 2016. Motion made by Mrs. Dean and second by Dr. McDermott that the Pencrest Board of School Directors denied the request of, of Mr. DeFrancesco to waive attorney-client privilege of the Pencrest Board as it relates, relates, relates to the detailed legal description in the solicitor bills and deny Mr. DeFrancesco request to review the detailed legal descriptions in the solicitor's bill. This motion contains statements that were attributed to me, but never made by me, such as the request made by, in quotations, "Mr. DeFrancesco" to waive attorney-client privileges. I never did that. And the only, the only board member present right here that will remember that is, is President Mark Giraud. I brought, I did bring this point to the attention of the board on May 12th, 2016 without resolution. I'm, I am convinced that the motion made by Mrs. Dean was not actually thought out and written by her due to the fact that motion contains too much legalese. I'm convinced that it was drafted by the administration who failed to submit, to submit it as a recommendation. Had I just let it pass, I would be, for all practical purposes, I would have killed my position as an elected official by denying me the right to review invoices before voting. I'd like to remind all that, all directors and the public that one of the major responsibilities of the board is to oversee that all financial dealings of the district are done in accordance with the requirement of the Public School Code. These duty and responsibilities both brought to the attention of the board every year by the district auditors. It was broadcasted on social media that the court order actually was not in my favor. Unfortunately, it is common to make mistakes when one has a hard time interpreting legal orders. I have with me a copy of the court memorandums right here. If anybody's interested to see it, they can check by, you can check by yourselves. That obtains with a court order. Anyone who wish to see them may contact me right here. Can send them an email at LADeFrancesco@gmail.com. And especially for you out there on TV land, please contact me because there's a lot of, a lot of misinformation going on out there. I also like to let you, the public, know that I, as a public official, am here to represent your interests, both as parents and taxpayers. I also like to remind you, the directors, do not receive payments for being on the board, and also to remind you that all directors do not receive payments for the, for the time spent on the board. We do not get paid, but yet we have time to, to get reimbursed for all the expenses that we incur while in, in office. And I truly believe that the districts should make an effort to recover all these expenses from the individuals who initiated the original action under false information. I'm afraid the pub, I don't know if it's legally we can, the board can do that since the individual who started the whole thing has been given immunity by this board for doing anything wrong. So my dear friends, it's up to you to find out what's going on. I told my story, and any information you wish from me, you can reach at this email. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say just a couple things, um, in regard to paying the bill. There, there's been plenty of discussion about this outside of executive session. I know that's been brought up to me, one of the very first meetings I went to, it was brought up outside of executive session to me, um, when I was first elected on whether or not to pay this bill. I know there's emails sent out throughout the district saying that this was, uh, out there. So it was sent out by Mr. DeFrancesco that he wanted to get this bill paid. Um, I do believe Mrs. Dean is intelligent enough to put forth a good motion, that she didn't have to be fed a motion for it to be intelligent and filled with, um, legalese. And the court order was a split decision, um, as stated in the newspaper by Mr. DeFrancesco's lawyer at the time, that it was a split decision. It was not completely one way or another. Moving on to my rationale for voting on this, there's no legal reason. Our legal representation says that there's no legal reason to pay this. We don't have an obligation to pay this. There's no duty to pay this. Um, so then you move on to, why would we pay it if we don't have a legal obligation to pay it? There are other options as a board member that, um, you can take if Mr. DeFrancesco felt that he was not able to fulfill his duties, would be, um, held accountable for voting for things. He could simply vote no on the legal bills, it would have cost the taxpayers nothing instead of the $34,000 that we paid in legal fees. Um, Mr. DeFrancesco has said that if he had known that this would cost us much money, he would have dropped the lawsuit, and that's the reason that before you run up legal bills, you have the board approve them. I think this would set a dangerous precedent, that anyone across the district could say that they're doing something for the district and then submit a bill afterwards. If my mother decided to pave her, her barnyard so the school bus could turn around, then it, then submit a bill and say she did it for the district without there being board approval, I feel that would be a bad precedent. You know, the school code also says board members can't have personal gain, and I believe that writing a check for $30,000 to Mr. DeFrancesco would go against the, the, the code of conduct for a school board member. Um, the reasons to vote for it is Mr. DeFrancesco, as stated, that he would bring a lawsuit against us if the bill, the vote goes against him. I don't feel that that's enough of a reason to vote for something when there's not an obligation for it, that if someone decides to bring the district and run up more legal bills, that that would be a decision that, that would be made not by the district, and that we should not reward people for threatening to sue us. That's all I have to say.
Mr. President, may I?
No.
Respond to Mr., because this is where the misinformation comes from. You know, you all have to understand that the only two people, there's only two people right now that knew all the facts, what happened, as I already described it. Mr. Jeff Brooks over here has been on the board for what, two years, maybe?
Two years is when you asked me to pick your legal bills.
Two years. And he was not even aware what went on back in the 2016. And yet, you know, he's telling you things that I say. And I don't know where he gets all this information.
I said things you said directly to me or things I've read.
Now, the point is-
And I read the lawsuit.
The point is, the school code is specifically say what a duty is as a, as board directors. The duty says- The duties is make sure that the students get the good education and the taxpayers' money are spent wisely for that purpose. And that's all I have to say.
So during that lawsuit, after you supposedly won or whatever that lawsuit, how much money did you find that we overpaid?
How much money did you find we overpaid due to the lawsuit? That was the question from Tim Brown.
Somebody asked a question.
Tim Brown asked you how much money we saved.
I said, sorry, after that lawsuit, you went through the bills again. How much money did we overpay?
I don't understand.
The law bills that you sued us over to sued the school district over.
My my legal fees?
No, the district.
No, the law bills that you sued the district over so you could see what you were seeing beforehand.
The money that this district?
No, no, let me finish. When you went through the bills after the lawsuit, did you how much money did you find that we overpaid or was a discretion or Ted Watch screwed us on?
You.
It's all hard. You sued us to see the bills because you thought we were getting screwed after you saw the bills.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the invoices.
That's what the lawsuit was over, Luigi. What did you find wrong?
I find wrong that has nothing to do.
No, 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 no. What did you find wrong? Why did as a district we spend all that money? What did you find wrong in the bills?
What I what I found out wrong in the bills?
How much did you save the taxpayers?
Mr. Brown.
I'm asking a question.
Okay, and I'm answering if you'll let me.
Hey. No, Luigi.
Has nothing to do with what you find.
Luigi, we're gonna vote. Have a seat.
All right, fine, that's it.
Wait a minute, I had one thing to say.
Nope, we're voting. End of discussion, we're voting. Rule call.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
Yes.
Mr. Giraud?
No.
Mr. Gulick?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Motion is defeated.
Is there any other new business?
I have just a follow-up question. Is Mr. DeFrancesco allowed to vote on that or should that have been an abstention?
It's a request for reimbursement. I'm not trying to reach myself.
No, no. I ask a simple question, it wasn't you, Mr. DeFrancesco?
He shouldn't be.
No, it's.
Any other new business?
Oh, yes.
I have a question on this, Luigi, before you before you start. I was reading through that. I had asked you last month, did you ever see on when the state disperses the money to the school districts? The one thing I can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, on the dispersment to the school districts.
What does this to do with it? What's your question?
The SB on the next motion on that bill.
Why don't they make the motion yet?
No, I have a question. Can I ask a question on it now?
No, you can ask.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. It was in my head, I just wanted to remember.
You're going ahead. Mr. President, I'd like to make a follow-up motion from the last last month. I I make a motion for the board to approve the resolution supporting House Bill 76 and Senate Bill 76 in reference to the elimination of property taxes for school districts as introduced by me, Luigi DeFrancesco, on September 12th, 2019. Information about these bills was submitted to our board directors as requested through the email.
Bob Johnston's second.
Yes. Mr. Brown, your question.
All right, Luigi, on the dispersments where the where we eliminate property tax, which is awesome, I like that, but when the government starts to disperse the money, I can't find where they say where if our costs go up due to cyber school tuition or whatever the case might be, there's nothing to state that we can go back and say, okay, instead of a $53 million budget, we're now at a $54 million budget. Can you show me anywhere that says that we're covered in that aspect?
I wish I could, but.
I couldn't find it.
I gave you all the information that was presented in the Senate and in the House.
Right.
So other than that, you know, as much as I.
I didn't know if you found something that.
The the rate of reimbursement is tied into the the rate of inflation. It doesn't go up higher than that. It doesn't account for cyber cost. It doesn't account for increases in pension costs. It doesn't account for anything other than the the cost of living and inflation. You know, there's a lot of bills in front of the House and Senate right now. There's a big push to get rid of property taxes, and I think that that's great. You know, but that's one of the big drawbacks to this one. I'm gonna vote no on this one, not due to my love of property taxes, but that there are so many other bills out there that offer a variety of other options that I think maybe are endorsing one bill that's been out there and hasn't gotten traction for quite a while might slow down progress on other bills.
Our our budget, yearly budget, Brian, definitely goes up way more than the cost of inflation or costs.
It averages anywhere from two and a half to three and a half percent.
Well, the other thing about this bill that some people may not know is that it it removes all taxes from businesses. You know, some people may think that's a good idea, but going forward, I'm not sure that after they do that, that we would be fully funded because that's a that's a big chunk of money. That's something we really need to consider.
Plus our, what is it, our income taxes going up too?
Income tax and state tax.
The reason I introduce this motion is because something has to be done. You know, it comes to a point that it comes to a point where we have too many people that are losing the after a lifetime of paying taxes, all of a sudden because they had fixed their income, they lose their homes because actually sometimes it makes me wonder if you really own the build the house, the home that we have. But, you know, that's how we pay for a service that governments render to us. But something needs to be done. Education is a responsibility of all. Everybody is responsible to pay. Not only we have the property owners in discount and everywhere in PA paying the general tax, education tax through the income tax that we already pay, but in addition to that, we pay, we forced to pay property taxes. Now, you know, the problem with property tax, the way I see it, those who can afford to pay, they got a nice job and they got a full-time job, that's fine, they can do it. But those who are on fixed income and they pay for school for school property taxes for most of their working life and all of a sudden, you know, they can come up with $2,000, $3,000 to pay for to stay in their house in their home. So there is, it's time somebody start doing something. We can't do it over here. That's only what I propose is a resolution to to make this lawmakers legislators do something. And that's what where our attention should be putting the legislators, they gotta do something to alleviate the problem. Not business should not be exempt from the property taxes, but the individual families deserve the right to live the life they want to live. They don't have to buy a shack so in order not to pay taxes and let everybody else pay the the higher taxes towards education. The the taxes, the way it's right now, the property taxes, they're not equal. Although we pay the same rate, which comply with the state law, you know, the payments are not equal. Some people get the same education for $200 a year versus $6,000 a year for the children, and that is not right. So I really hope that legislators wake up and do something seriously. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna vote.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No on this bill, but I agree there is needs to be a resolution. I just have problems supporting this one.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
Yes.
Mr. Giraud?
No.
Mr. Gulick?
No, as much as I dislike property taxes, I don't think this is the way to go. I don't think we should single one out and and approve it, no.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
All right, motion is defeated. Board remarks. Let's start with Mr. DeFrancesco.
Board remarks, we're starting with you. You get to go first.
Oh, come to the point. Boy, I got I gotta put some water in my mouth. Well, I got a chance to go see our band participating in the competition at the Maplewood High School football ground. It was it was really an exceptional view to see the young kids doing performance, the talent, showing the talent, the musical talent. And and I'm really convinced that we we as a board should do anything we can to help our kids, those kids who want to do have talent and love music, to allow them to do to proceed towards their goals. I really encourage all the residents of district to go and watch our kids perform. They're fantastic.
I did not do my normal roundup of all athletics across Pancras. I apologize for that. I will say, you know, all our kids are doing spectacular, they're working hard. I know the all the activity bus, I see more and more kids utilizing that. I think that's a great resource to help support some of the kids that are out there. I know that the beginning of the year, there was one kid using it in Sagertown, and now I see that it's getting larger and larger. So that's a great thing the board has done. This week, I had an opportunity to see how things should work. The junior high football teams from Maplewood and Sagertown were going to play, and it got canceled because Sagertown Junior High did not have enough healthy eligible players. And the coaches and the athletic director and the administration all got together and figured out a way to make that happen, made some accommodations, and I came from a 10-on-10 football game out of Maplewood right before this. The nice thing about that is being a Maplewood alumni, I can say, great job Maplewood. They won 42, and my son plays for Sagertown, and we feel bad that they were at zero. So and then the last thing is just, you know, there's great things happening in our district. I'm glad to see us moving forward, putting things behind us that are just obstacles and making sure that our board functions the way they can to make sure that we can move forward, and I see a lot of that happening outside of board meetings.
I was excited about the presentation with the history. Since I retired, I started getting into that myself a little bit. I got a metal detector and go on around the older sites and finding some neat things. It's exciting to see the kids getting into their local history as well as the history that you teach them. I think that's awesome. And I got an email at our trap club that has done well. I don't think I'm gonna get to attend their thing. I think I gotta work at day for security thing, but I'm impressed. I think it's an awesome thing for our school to be able to do, especially in today's climate where there's so much anti-gun sentiment, and I'm impressed with that. And I'd like to thank all the teachers for their hard work and especially going above and beyond like this history thing. That's awesome.
I would also like to thank Mr. Newfer and Hope and Ainsley, the eighth graders and their their teachers and all the faculty that were responsible for that. I think that's a great thing. That's the great thing about living in a small town is being able to, you know, check out your local history. I don't think the big city kids get to do that and they don't know what they're missing. So thank you for that presentation. Let's keep it short and sweet. Good luck to the the fall sports kids as they continue on and head toward the playoffs. And that's all I have.
I also Julie and the other teachers from the history, being from Cambridge, it's awesome to it's hard to to believe that this little old town has that much history and and more and more, but that's great. Congratulations to all the sports teams. They're all doing great cross country, near and dear to my heart, it was awesome to see the girls do so well. And Stacy, awesome job for filling in there for comments. Almost called you Nick, was it? You know, just it's good to see everybody back to school and touch on what Jeff said that this district is making progress, leaps and bounds. We've got we're still going through some tough times, but we're getting there and we're seeing the changes, and they're positive, and and Ken's doing a great job with the cyber school and the teachers working on that. I mean, it's just all good things we're seeing, and that's the things I like to see in the newspaper. I'd like to get away from the negativity and stick on the positives that we have in this district because there are a lot of them. We have great teachers, we have great staff, and our students are doing an awesome job. And I would like I'd like them to know that. So that's the things I'd like to see in the paper for once. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, I I don't really have anything to add, so we will go to.
Couple of comments, announcements.
Announcements.
Just two announcement, a couple announcements. Next Thursday, October 17th at 6:00 PM, there's a Crawford County Safety Summit that we partnered with the other local school districts at Meadville Area High School. The following week, October 23rd at 7:00 PM, here in Cambridge Springs Auditorium, we're having the Athletic Town Hall meeting to talk about our athletic programs and to hear some comments from residents as we move forward as a follow-up to our meeting last May. Lastly, we had executive session on October 7 and 10 for the purposes of personnel negotiations.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.